Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at seven o'clock. It's Secretary of Callroll.
Kendra Barberina is here. Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Jim Harb.
Here.
John Idzal.
Here.
Bob Dorshewitz.
Here.
Keith Postow.
He's at.
Oh, excuse, right. And Bill Pratt.
Here.
Okay, and we have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the agenda submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anyone here that wishes to speak to any items not on the agenda? Okay. Then moving on to old business. Application 2274-0118, the Beck Road PUD. And Ms. Howell, you have your report.
Thank you, Commissioners. The application before you is for an update to the final development plan, which is part of the Beck Road PUD option overlay for Phase One only. And I'll go over some of the outstanding comments that were last provided to the Commission in the March 22 review letter. This is the review letter that you received in your packet. And the applicant since this time has provided some revised site plan drawings, which were forwarded today to the Commission. There's also two copies at the dais if you'd like to kind of pass them around. I can also send my copy around if you'd like another one, and I have them on the screen to go over as well. So, the first item, and here, I can send my copy.
There's several plans in.
Oh, are there several? They're all stapled together?
Yeah, they're stapled together.
They're all different?
Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay, we, those two can share.
Okay.
Those two, and then you and I can share.
Oh, okay.
Sharing's good.
Sharing is good.
Cherry's carry.
Okay. Okay, we got it straightened out.
Thank you for that. I don't want to share with you. Don't do this.
The first item on the review that's outstanding is the finalization of the land combination. We're still pending some final documentation. This will have to be provided prior to consideration by the Board of Trustees. The land combination is necessary because this was before we amended the PUD ordinance, and at that time, the PUDs could only be for parcels that were five acres or greater. And each of these parcels is two and three, so they have to be combined in order to meet and satisfy that requirement. And that is lingering, but I believe close, and I think engineering may have an update on where that stands as well when we get to the report. So, the next item would be the preservation of site features. And as you recall, eighty-nine quality trees for just over fourteen hundred inches of healthy tree trunk were removed, which requires one hundred and twenty-one trees to be replaced. And seventy-seven trees have been proposed. The previous landscape plans that you received in your packet, not the ones that were mailed out today, had species, had the revised species, so the elimination of, I believe, the pines and replace with the firs, which is an improvement. And then the revised drawings also have the height and maturity of the plants has been increased. So if we go to the landscape plan, at the bottom of the landscape plan, as shown on the screen in the bottom left corner there, the firs and the arboridie, everything has been increased to ten feet in height or eight feet in height, where previously it was five to eight. So, this is an improvement to the quality of the replacement trees being provided. In addition to these replacement trees, there will also be forty-four trees that cannot be accommodated on site, and those trees equate to a dollar amount, and that will be paid into, as payment in lieu, to the township's tree fund.
How much?
Let me just do the math quickly. Just over fifteen thousand dollars.
Double it.
That's all. That's like three hundred dollars a tree.
Three fifty.
Three fifty is the standard.
Three fifty a tree.
That is something to be considered by the township. In terms of engineering, we will discuss the engineering review later this evening. An engineering approval must be finalized prior to the Board of Trustees' consideration. In terms of vehicular access, going back to the overall site plan, since this is just for Phase One, Wayne County did not have any recommendations to the existing access drive off Beck Road. But we're recommending that for Phase Two, that the motion tonight would be contingent on providing improvements to that intersection, possibly with a boulevard entrance. At the time, that Phase Two is considered, which of course would have to go through site plan process, but something for the Commission to consider in their motion this In addition to the replacement trees, some other landscaping items have been addressed on the site plan. So for instance, an additional five deciduous trees were required to meet the parking lot landscape requirement. The applicant has removed the Phase Two landscaping, as shown on the screen, and put this on a separate sheet, which just makes for ease of understanding. The corpus, is that how you say it, Chairman Sabolski?
Choropolis.
Choropolis.
Choralopolis.
Choralopolis. Thank you. Has been replaced with a different perennial that will be a little bit hardier in a commercial And we discussed the increase to the planting sizes. Item F, which is really the bark and edging, has to do with the front area along Beck If you'll see the frontage along Beck Road, where there's the sidewalk that kind of goes east and west towards Ruby, the former Ruby Tuesdays Restaurant, everything north of that was to be replaced. All the mulch was to be replaced with sod for a nice clean lawn area. But then the southern half, the mulch was proposed to stay, and for uniformity and just more of a maintenance-free environment, we're recommending that the sod be continued. It doesn't look like that item has been addressed, but it's my understanding that the applicant is willing to make that change. And then the final, or another item under landscaping, is that deciduous shrubs per the ordinance should be a minimum of thirty inches at the time of planting. There are two conflicting standards in the ordinance, wherein another section, it says twenty-four inches. And the applicant, for Phase One, there will be one hundred and fifty-five new deciduous shrubs that will be planted on the site that are to be twenty-four inches in height. And the applicant is requesting to continue to be able to plant those one hundred and fifty-five shrubs at twenty-four inches in height, and request that waiver and interpretation from the ordinance. That discretion is up to the Planning Commission if you feel that twenty-four inches in height as opposed to thirty or thirty-six will be advantageous for the site. A lot of the shrubs are in the parking lot areas, and the applicant can provide some more information on why that request is being made. In terms of the building design and architecture, we can go through the elevations one by one. They have added some canopy details here. This is the front elevation that faces Beck Road, and added the stone sill between the stone and the brick foundation. And this revision also has lowered the windows a bit to allow for a greater area, not as busy area for the wall signs that will likely go above this canopy. I think one item for discussion this evening is whether or not the canopy is decorative enough. And Chairman Sabolski has provided some photos of the adjacent former Ruby Tuesdays. I suppose I could try and turn down some of the lights if it would make it easier to see. I think it gets a little washed out on the screen, if it would be helpful for the Commission. But this is, that you can tell that this is a more decorative canopy in nature. Would you like me to adjust the lights?
No. I don't think it's necessary.
No.
It's okay.
The problem is, they weren't wired that way.
What?
So that, the canopy, if it were to mirror the canopy that's used at the former Ruby Tuesdays, if that would add more continuity to the site and be more decorative than just the straight awning, that would be something for consideration.
Do we know if they are keeping that canopy?
They are.
They are?
Correct, yes. This is on the northern elevation, so this will face the former Ruby Tuesdays. And the windows that are located on the left in this picture, those are to be regular, clear, transparent windows. This is where the seating area will be inside. And then the windows on the right are proposed to be the fake sprandl, similar to what we have at CVS. The applicant has added the additional mullens, as requested, in the upper windows, very similar to some windows that we have at the township, but not in this room. And then the stone cap has been extended across the entire base of the foundation sill. And just kind of as a reference, each one of those two-pane windows, so there are four windows currently showing on the elevation, each one of those four windows is eight feet in width, so they are quite substantial on the facade. And then this is on the facade facing south on Beck Road, what you would see if you were driving north on Beck Road. And they also have extended the sill, added the mullens, and there is also a proposed small canopy over the drive-through window, which is located on the right. And then on the rear facade, the applicant has raised the height of the windows and added the stone treatment along the foundation and also the top of the two windows. And I believe the applicant has brought some building materials this evening for your review again. It's been a while since we last saw and discussed those. And the window sill treatment is similar to like what's being shown in these two photos, just as a visual breakup between kind of the busier texture of the base and then the redder brick on the top. And these photos by Chairman Sabolski also help kind of show the different brick colors and stone continuity between the two buildings. If I can go back to the site plan, the other kind of architectural item is that in the middle of the site, almost right behind the proposed building, I have my cursor on it. I know it's not that easy to see, but this is where the trash enclosure is, and it's proposed at six feet in height. And what Jennifer and I have been experiencing in a lot of communities is that trash enclosures at six feet aren't properly screening the refuse containers inside, especially when the lids are often kind of flapped open. So, since this will be so visible, and if the hotel or another building is built as part of Phase Two, it will be extremely visible, even though there is some landscaping around it, we're recommending that the Commission consider an increase to seven or eight feet in order just to make sure that everything inside is properly screened. The enclosure will be constructed of macery materials to match the proposed building and the former Ruby Tuesdays. And then moving on to the lighting package. The applicant has designated on the site plan now that the, well, first of all, there are, there are two types of lights being proposed. There's pole lights, new pole lights in the parking lot that are to be decorative in nature, and this is an image of, from the catalog, of what those lights look like. And then there are the secondary building-mounted lights, which are shown in the colored picture on this plan here, and a total of twelve of those will be located around the building as shown on the facade. In terms of the parking lot lights, we had recommended that some of them be removed. We felt that with the landscaping and with the building-mounted lights and the existing lights at the former Ruby Tuesdays, that it was kind of site overload and might actually be distracting from those driving and just using the site. And the applicant was okay with some of that removal. Certainly, we want to make sure that there's adequate light on the site, but we don't want to blind people or have it just be too cluttered as well, right? So, the applicant has removed a couple strategic light poles that weren't needed, and they have stated on their site plan that the lights will either be black or dark bronze. Those are the only two colors that these pole lights come in. Without specifying on the site plan, maybe the Planning Commission would like to recommend a color that they prefer. They have also provided the cost estimate for Model B, but not for Model A. And the height of the light pole has now been reduced to fifteen feet. After discussing the light pole a bit with Chairman Sabolski and looking at the actual illumination standards that are listed in their catalog, a lower height of a light pole is recommended for this light type, even as low as eight feet. So perhaps ten feet might be a happy medium as opposed to fifteen. A ten-foot light pole would also kind of have that more pedestrian environment or feeling, similar to what we have by Grand Traverse Pie, for instance, or in downtown Plymouth. So that would be one item for consideration by the Commission. I think those are the majority of the outstanding items. Chairman Sabolski also raised a very good idea on the patio, which, in that there might be an opportunity to have some decorative pavers or decorative concrete to this area to, you know, kind of try and employ some placemaking and make it feel more unique to the community and kind of match the building. There's already that decorative ornamental black fence that's being proposed to enclose it with landscaping, so this would just further enhance the area. But that again would be up to the Commission. And then just recommending that any conditions are attached to a final recommendation to the Board of Trustees for their consideration, that the Commission sees fit, including the appropriate bonds for landscaping. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Back to you, and we'll ask the engineer for his report.
We sent a review about a week and a half ago, and the, the plans are basically approved at this time, and we have requested the construction plan sets. There are some items that still need to be submitted before they can schedule a pre-construction meeting. One is that, and I understand, they're still waiting for the sanitary sewer permit from the state. The second one is the stormwater agreement. I'm guessing that that should be executed after the lot combination, because it turned out that the two parcels there have two different ownerships, and I know they're both owned by the same individual, but they have different names. So, once they get combined, then whatever's the entity that owns the whole parcel would be the one signing, executing the agreement. Same thing applies for the water manisment and the sanitary sewer easement. And of course, the last item is the completion of the parcel combination. Now, the plans that they have submitted, it needs, this plan set needs to have the first three sheets to be revised or updated because of the minor changes on the legal descriptions of the parcels. Basically, the plans are considered approved as noted at this time, and other than those items that I have just mentioned, most of the previous outstanding items are now resolved or addressed.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And so, maybe we'll just go through the report and see what to come up with. So, start off with the site design and use, and the very first outstanding item was the land combination. So, Leo, is he moving forward on that?
We get the final comments back from the engineer. We sent the backdoor surveyor. There were some text items. Certain maps on the plan that were not legible.
Can you just flip on the mic so we can hear you a little bit better?
Some of the text.
Yeah, just flip the switch.
You got to turn that.
Testing.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, we can hear you better.
As I was saying, the, we received the comments back from engineering. Some of them were text-related. What happened when you consolidate these plans, the text is not as legible. Wayne County won't record them. They can't read the text. So they suggest we pull some stuff off that was not relevant to the lot combination. And I sent those over a couple days, so we'll get them back to the engineering for their final review. The other items regarding, I'll stay on engineering. The other items on engineering will certainly comply with what their requests are for easements on stormwater, water, and we're waiting on sanitary.
Okay. Then we come to the preservation of the site features about the trees, and I know several Commissioners have told me they have some remaining concerns on that, so I'll open the floor up to whoever has a comment. So, Commissioner Harb.
Yes. Okay, so I know that as of last week, Commissioner Dorshewitz had not had an opportunity to go to the site and look at how the site looked prior to the removal of the trees. And I don't know if any other Commissioners have not yet seen the site, so I took an opportunity to take some pictures, and there's a posted on each picture showing the view from where the picture was taken. And the very last picture is indicative of what the site looked like prior to the trees being removed. In addition, I went back to our November meeting where the applicant's representative, Leo, said they had no intent to remove all the trees. Many of the quality trees are along the West property line, and those trees are all gone. So, I see that the one hundred and twenty-one trees are to be replaced, and the applicant wants to replace seventy-seven, which is roughly sixty percent of what was taken out. I find that to be really unacceptable. I just, I just have a real, real difficult time with this, how, how they could come in. You know, there's an old saying, "It's better to ask for forgiveness than permission." And I think, I haven't even seen Ned come in and ask for forgiveness. I mean, you're representing the applicant, and, you know, we have a couple of other really nice parcels in this township that are heavily wooded, and I would hate to see them come back and say, "We set precedent with this site." And if, if the payment in lieu were going to the site and we were building, you know, putting the trees on the site, I guess I'd feel much better about it. But being the payment in lieu is going, God only knows where it's going. We can't, we don't know where it's going.
General fund.
And, you know, in your dialogue in November, you said, "We intend to replace all the trees that we take out." And now you are intending to replace sixty percent. So, I, I mean, I'll leave it at that and let the other Commissioners have their, their say with this.
Let me just ask one question, and I'll turn it over to you. So, I thought we had a discussion sometime back about the tree fund. Is there a dedicated tree fund, or does it, does it go to the general fund?
Before, there was not a dedicated tree fund, and in 2018, Cindy and the Treasurers Department set up a dedicated fund just for the landscaping payment in lieu to go into. There, there's a small reservoir in there right now. Nothing has been taken out, and, you know, that would be at the Board's discretion to use that for a larger public purpose. That's, you know, that's the trade-off with the payment in lieu, is that the money would go towards something that could benefit the larger community. So for instance, McCompaugh Park or another highly-used area of the township.
So where did the three, oh, sorry. I, just a couple. Is that, is that the same way the sidewalk fund works?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So where did the, where does three fifty come from?
Three hundred and fifty dollars.
Three fifty is the current standard for a three-inch caliper tree in Michigan, per landscape architects.
You said for a three-inch caliper tree. A lot of those trees were more than three-inch caliper trees.
Correct. The way that our zoning ordinance is written is that only replacement trees are by three-inch caliper, and a quarter of what's removed is replaced.
So, three hundred and fifty dollars is a standard, is a standard that is used as a cost for a three-inch tree? Is, I didn't follow what you said.
Correct, yes.
Is that planted, three hundred and fifty dollars?
No.
Not planted.
Just the cost for the tree itself.
Yeah. So it's.
But nothing set in stone, am I right?
What's that?
Correct.
All right.
So do we have discretion to, somebody raised that issue before, do we have discretion to say that it should be X amount of dollars lower or higher than three fifty?
Well, even if we didn't have the discretion to do that, we could recommend it.
Right, that's what I mean. We could recommend that, the trustees, or are they?
They don't have to abide by it, but we can recommend it.
Recommend what now?
That, that we perhaps use a different standard than three hundred and fifty dollars. And, and, not that I'm just chiming in here.
No, no.
I agree a hundred percent with Commissioner Harb. Either we're going, we need to improve the percentage of replacement trees, or we need to make it sure that people understand that they just can't go clear-cut the site whenever they feel like they want to.
Well, also, if you'll recall, when we were looking at the preliminary site plan of this property, given the nature of the industrial site behind it and the noise that was emitted from that site, that those trees, existing trees, were sheltering some of that noise.
I know, I do recall that.
And now those trees are gone.
Yeah, I know, I understand that. That's why I, I'm saying I agree a hundred percent with you. We've got to do one of two things. We either have to increase the density or the number of trees that are actually being replaced, or we've got to make sure that, that this applicant and other applicants in future cases understand that there is a penalty for not doing what they're saying they're going to do.
Right.
Right.
Because, as I said at the original meeting, this commission was lied to. And I can't abide liars. And I just, you know, I would love to have my friend Ned here so I could tell it to his face. I don't think we'll ever see Ned again because he knows what he's in for. So, all I'm saying to you, Leo, and I understand all you are as a representative, all I'm saying to you is, he needs to understand that he is going to suffer consequences for what he's done, in some fashion, in some way.
Understood. Let me make a suggestion. We only replaced what we could on the site due to the limitations of where we think we'll be in the future on the Phase Two of this development. We could conceivably, and it would be our preference, to replace all the trees on-site. But you have an ordinance, you have a certain amount of trees that you can plant within the space we thought we would just plant the perimeter. So, I would go on record and say, "We will replace the other 44 trees on-site as well." The issue is, we don't know where our future footprint's going to be. We could very well accommodate these 44 trees like we've accommodated these other replacement trees on the site as we planned. Now, if it were not for us, for Ned taking the step that he took, we wouldn't be in this situation, a portion of those trees. But in this case, the best remedy I can offer is that we'll replace the additional 44 trees on the site. And what we could conceivably do, and I would suggest we plant them along the western property line and the northern property line, and what we can, and I don't really think it's going to impact our future development of the footprint that we evolved, that transpires. And then, we'll have 100% of the replacement trees on-site. And if, on the outside chance that we plant them in an area that we develop in the future because of parking, then we'll replace them within our site plan, which is very conceivable, like we've done already. So, I would offer that up. And it was not our intent not to plant all the trees here. It was only our intent to, I never felt that we could put it within the building envelope. And with the planner maybe input on this, we'd be available, we would consider doing that. I know it doesn't resolve the issue of what happened.
So, I agree.
I can't go back and change that. But hopefully, I can remedy and put forth a remedy that's more acceptable.
Well, unfortunately, a $15,000 is, it's not adequate. It's not adequate. I mean, you know, you're saying our intentions are, you said your intentions were before to do certain things. And, you know, we're talking about site preservation, and I see no preservation whatsoever. I see nothing but destruction. And again, we have other parcels in this community that could follow suit, and I would hate to see that happen.
So, what would you want to see? Would you want to see?
I would want to see the trees planted.
So, maybe the recommendation is all the trees planted, and for everyone that's not planted, it's $3,000 or something that is incentivized, so they're incentivized to do so.
And besides that, given the history of this developer, that he posts a $50,000 bond in lieu.
Prior to construction.
Prior to construction, right, absolutely. So, my thought process was this. Either they plant the trees that they're supposed to plant according to our zoning ordinance, or for every, and Bob's is much more flexible. What I was going to say is that the 44 trees that aren't being planted will cost the developer $1,000 apiece. And in that way, and in addition to that, to ensure that we get that money, he must post a bond before he starts construction of $50,000.
Commissioner Barberina?
I just wanted to bring up again that this site, we've had numerous applications to have a hotel on the site, and it had been denied repeatedly. It finally got accepted, and we were sold on the fact that these trees would protect the people in the hotel. They would never see the industrial building next door that looks like this. You can't plant a tree this tall. So, we're going to have a, I don't know, three-story, four-story hotel? The trees aren't going to screen that.
They will in about 50 years.
Right.
If they live.
If they live.
If they live.
Did you have any comments?
I drive past it many times a day, and it's a tough pill to swallow. It's really ugly and unnecessary. And I'm also curious, on the west side, the density of those trees certainly looks like potential problems for growing into each other and, sorry, how are we assured that the spacing will be right that'll allow a 50-year growth?
That is one question that I asked the landscape architect, especially since the size of those trees have now been increased to 10 feet in height at the time of planting, which is a good size for a evergreen. The quantity, so the size was increased to 10 feet, but the actual quantity did not change. So, I too have reservations on whether or not that spacing is adequate, and if that has been really taken into consideration by the landscape architect.
I just counted, added up, just on the west boundary, not the Home Depot site, but there's 72 trees. And when you look at the site plan, I mean, it looks like there's a lot of trees there, but it's 72 trees, and I'm not sure how, you know, it's one inch equals 30, 30 feet. So, I don't know how many trees that is for, you know, for 10 feet or whatever it is. But it doesn't seem like there's enough with 72 trees.
That there's enough space?
Even with, yes, even with, you know, I wouldn't want to see it all crammed in there, and then trees grow, and they get inadequate sun and air and those kinds of things.
Soil.
Yeah, right. We want them to, and I'm presuming that that west line at this Phase One will all be irrigated, so there's some assurance that the trees will survive?
I'm not sure if that will be irrigated.
Do you know, Leo, if that's going to be irrigated on the west side?
I don't have that answer. But we're going to be in a position that if the trees die, that we're going to have to replace them, so it makes good sense for us to irrigate. And, you know, we have the flexibility of the land back there. Mind you, we don't have a project planned yet for the rear portion of this. So, you know, we'll provide ample spacing, and now we're contemplating these 44 trees. I think I'll focus the 44 trees sort of on the northwest corner, where it's not as, where there's more room there, and less likely that to be our future limits of our development, if you would. But, no, it's, you know, you have an ordinance, if the trees die, you know, we're going to have to replace them.
Isn't the southwest one of those, where the industrial building is?
West, due west. There is a building on the south, Kendra, but we're not planning there.
So, I'm not sure if all the commissioners are aware that this site has been removed off of the work session for the trustee meeting next week. But it will. The trustee meeting was canceled. Oh, it was canceled, but it will be on your April 9th, I think is when the meeting. Yeah. So, maybe on the trees, I'm just throwing this out for further discussion, maybe what we should do is, our recommendation should say that we would want some, we recommend that the trustees gather some additional information as to the adequacy of those trees, the number, dependent on not overcrowning the trees to ensure that, you know, when they get bigger, they're not going to be just growing into each other.
It really matters spacing, isn't it?
It's the spacing.
Yeah.
And maybe 72 is the right number. I mean, I don't know. But we don't know if it is right or wrong.
You sure can't tell it from that drawing.
You can't, because it looks like there's more than 72.
Maybe that's intentional. So, a proper-sized, Laura, a proper-sized landscape plan would tell us that, right?
Do you mean to scale?
I mean, to scale, yeah, so that we could actually see what the thing looks like, rather than all crunched together like that.
Yeah, it would be helpful if the applicant or the landscape architect provided like a center, you know, on-center to on-center between the trees to be able to see the spacing.
Yeah, I just, you know, and again, I, you know, be that as it may, and I understand that those points are very valid. I think we, at least as a commission, need to make people understand that we are here to protect the township and work with the developer where possible, but protect the township. And the only way we can protect the township going forward because of the abhorrent actions of this developer is to make sure that we don't set precedent for it.
Commissioners, can I raise a question? I am wondering, looking at the site, if the landscaping is planted on the west end, and then you have the development, you know, to the east, is that just left as topsoil that's graded for the interim before a Phase Two is brought before the township? Or is this sodded? How is that entire area of land, almost two and a half acres, to be handled? Because development could come, you know, this year?
I could almost guarantee you, it's going to look exactly like it does now.
Do you know if he has plans on grading it in some way?
We're going to have a finish grade there. We're going to have a rough grade at a finish because we don't know what the finish grade is going to be. And it's likely we're going to take our topsoil from this phase, although, you know, we're not moving a whole lot of dirt off of Ruby Tuesday's because it's a current parking lot. So, we'll grade it down to as much of a finish grade, if you would, which will include topsoil because now we've got more topsoil out there exposed, which will be a much better finish coat than a engineered dirt, if you would.
So, it could be years. I don't know if, Laura, do you have any recommendation? If they just do a rough grade, that they could just seed it? I mean, I wouldn't mind, you know, weeds growing, and that it would be graded in such a way that it could be cut because you don't want things growing three or four feet high.
You don't want just weeds, kind of a haphazard area. I suppose one option would be to plant some trees. You want almost to screen that portion of the property, but the problem with actually planting something is that, you know, the site is able to be developed, whether it's for the hotel or whether it would be an office building in the future or some other use. And you don't want to prematurely cause the removal of healthy vegetation either.
It's already been done.
Pardon me?
I said, "That's already been done."
I suppose just a lawn area would look the nicest, but that would require, you know, sod and irrigation and continued maintenance.
I'm not suggesting something that fine, you know, because it is potentially going to be developed into something. We don't know when. But I just don't want to see it graded and then left to its own devices, like, you know, nature.
Yeah.
You know, even planting wildflowers or something like Bosch has done along their side of, you know, on Hagerty would be better. Sort of environmental friendly and, you know, butterflies and all those, you know, nice insects and wildlife.
May I suggest that we do a grading, do a, you know how the farmers come through and grade in the spring and they clean up in the fall? We do that twice a year, and where is needed. So, that would get the vegetation that grows inadvertently through, you know, just aside, through the dirt, and we would just keep it graded, run a farm grade through there. I mean, that'd be easy enough, and then you don't have to see overgrown vegetation.
How soon would that be done?
Well, when, we don't do it now, we'll do it after we're done planting. Well, no, that actually can be done now. We're going to wait to plant the pines to the September. You don't want to get pines in in the winter, I'm sorry, in the summer because they just...
We don't want the site looking like it looks now.
We can clean it.
It looks like, you know, a four-part...
We can do that immediately. We can do the cleanup back there immediately, that there's nothing precludes us from doing that right now.
That's what I was looking, I'm sorry, that's what I was looking at those pictures about, because, I mean, this is just awful. And something has to be done about this nearly immediately, just to make the place look, your tenants in front aren't going to want this place looking like this.
I agree. No, that's something we can do.
Okay.
It's going to be something we can do before we plant the trees.
So, if we stipulate that you'll run a farm grader through there twice a year, in the spring and the fall?
Well, stipulate that we're going to run a farm grader through there in the next 30 days.
Okay.
And then thereafter, we'll get it cleaned up for you.
Okay.
And then thereafter, your other language.
Okay.
I think the engineer had a comment.
About the rear site, they have a soil erosion permit to do grading for the whole site. And the assumption there on that permit was the rear portion is going to be developed the same time as the Phase One. Now, since you have that permit, although it's now Phase Two, if and when you disturb that area, you are supposed to at least stabilize the disturbed portion. And typically, developers or contractors, they just spread some grass seeds there, wait for it to grow, and that's the time that the authority, in this case Wayne County, they're supposed to make sure that before they release the site, that it has stabilized, that there won't be soil erosion potential for the open area.
Because it's in its current condition, is there a requirement, you know, how I've seen where they put, you know, fencing to prevent the runoff into adjacent sites? Is that being required with this?
Well, if, actually, they're going to be working for Phase Two on this one with the underground storm sewers. I mean, the underground utility, to be more specific, the storm sewer. So, more likely than not, they're going to be disturbing a great potential, a great area in the rear. So, they are required to, after they have regraded it, flattened it, then they're supposed to put something there. It could be seed, grass seeds, or, I mean, sometimes after a while, weeds grow, and depending on the authority, as long as it's stabilized, that soil is not going to runoff, they would accept that one. But they want some vegetation growing there, those disturbed areas, before they really accept it or release it from soil erosion requirements.
So, are you saying the vegetation has to be there on Phase Two in order for Phase One to be fully operable? Do they have to do it in Phase Two?
You mean, released from their obligation?
Yep, because it's going to be one parcel, right?
I would say yes. It has to be stabilized. And again, stabilized, it's a little bit...
It's a gray area.
Yes, I mean, there could be bushes there or shrubs, as long as the ground has cover.
It sure sounds like topsoil and hydroseed to me.
Yeah, they could use hydroseeding too, which most of the time really works very well.
If it gets rain, yeah.
Okay, have we, anyone else has anything more about the whole tree thing? Okay, have we, anyone else has anything more about the whole tree thing? Okay, then moving on, on the entrance. Consideration of a boulevard entrance once Phase Two is developed. So what is the commission's feelings on a boulevard entrance?
Where are you at?
I'm at Item Five, vehicle access and circulation, the outstanding. So she talks about, she doesn't mention it in the report, but she did, in her explanation of the report, mention, well, she does say "I expect it to be a boulevard entrance at the time." That would, that would help, I believe, with the traffic circulation and the egress-ingress off of Beck Road and perhaps turning left or right, however you're coming into there.
Correct, and it may also limit left-hand turns out of the site at that point. Right now, the intensity of the site with the Phase One development is only gonna be marginal. The restaurant capacity for the new Buddies is to be the same as Ruby Tuesday's. And the new building itself is relatively small. I believe that it would be, I think, based on their seating and occupation with employees, like 60 more people maximum, which is, you know, the aggressive count for the site.
My concern is that they haven't gotten the secondary access easement from Home Depot by now. They're never gonna get it.
But that's not required, you told us.
The fire department provided a letter in the packet for just Phase One, which secondary access for them is not required based on the use.
I know, but I'm talking about, you know, Phase Two is gonna depend on, you know, the acquisition of that easement, right?
Correct.
So my point being, Phase Two might never get built.
But it's not, it's just for fire, it's not for...
I know.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah.
It's just for what, Dan?
It's just for fire.
It's not, if it is a hotel, the occupants would not use it. It's just for the fire department.
Laura, you mentioned in Item Five at the bottom under outstanding items that the driveway width is set at 25 feet, and you recommend that it be something expanded to what degree? And why would we wait for Phase Two and not do it now with Phase One?
Well, the intensity of the site is not increasing that much to where there would need to be additional traffic calming or directional measures. Wayne County has approved the ingress and egress as it's under their jurisdiction without improvements. But with the development, especially of something as large as a hotel or an office use in the back, that may have 100 plus more individuals at the site, it would, and if this is truly going to be the only entrance, because if you recall, when this PUD was first started, it was proposed that there would be two forms of public access to the site. And so that really wasn't a priority for changing this intersection if the county didn't see a need for it. But I think it would be prudent for the township to require some improvements, regardless of what the county recommends at the Beck Road entrance.
Well, rather than disturbing it twice, I mean, if you're gonna put the drive-in, I mean, it's a, so the existing drive is at 25, is that what we're saying?
Correct, and there's no change proposed to that.
So I guess the question is, if you put a boulevard in there, how wide would it be?
That is a question.
Yeah, I thought that's what you asked, but I don't think, I don't think I heard an answer.
I'm not 100% sure on the measurements. I think Dave Richmond, and perhaps you could also speak to that, but it would have to meet the minimum standards.
For a boulevard, typically 30 feet would be back-up curb to back-up curb width, having it 10 feet wide or 11 feet wide for one lane, and then on both sides of the boulevard, and whatever's left, that would be the boulevard width.
Okay, so we're at 25 feet now.
And sometimes, we have seen some developments wider than that, but not that much wider than 30 feet back-up curb to back-up curb.
Okay, so I apologize, but I'm not sure. So if we have 25 feet now, do we need 30 feet? Do we need 40 feet? What is it that you would need?
Well, if it's going to be a boulevard, then it has to be wider measurement from back-up curb to back-up curb.
We would need 30 feet at that point, minimum.
30 feet, yeah, okay. That's all I was trying to get at, it was what it was looking, which to me, you know, why not do it now? You've got, you know, you're only talking five more feet, and does that mean that we have to go, that they would have to go back to Wayne County to get that done?
Any work within the...
Within the right of way.
...road, which is a Wayne County jurisdiction, will require a permit from the county.
Okay, so maybe more, the more prudent thing would be to recommend that upon development of Phase Two, that it is expanded to a boulevard. I think, you know, 'cause we don't need to go back to Wayne County now. Wayne County doesn't even know where it exists, so that's just my opinion.
Plus, we don't know if there'll ever be a Phase Two.
Yeah, wow, that's true.
All right, so now, moving on to number eight. So I wanna confirm the Item F on that item, that the edging that would be replaced with sodded lawn, sodded lawn along Beck Road, not just the northern portion. So Leo, you confirm that that would be done?
We agree to continue the sod and lawn, well, it's one of the same, sodded lawn to the south. Match it with the north.
And are all of the, all the planting areas, including any in the parking lot, are those all irrigated?
I'm gonna defer to the planner. Do we show that on our landscape plan?
I believe there's a note on the landscape plan that states irrigation, although it's not 100% sure if that applies to the replacement trees on the west end, only because I'm not certain that there will be utilities and a water supply running to that portion of the site.
But in the future, whenever Phase Two is developed, we could require the irrigation for those trees back there.
I would strongly recommend that they be irrigated with a uniform, consistent water supply. If it's gonna be the bag approach, which I know, I think the township has authorized in certain circumstances, like for instance, Our Lady of Good Counsel, when there were some parking islands that were redone, instead of ripping out the entire parking lot, the bag drip system was applied to those parking lot trees. And that's okay, but for something this big and needing that much care, I don't think it would end favorably for the plants.
Yeah, are we done with the irrigation thing?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that was, that's where I was headed. The Item G, which Laura's recommending 30 inches rather than 24. Why 24, Leo? Have you bought them already?
Pardon me?
Have you bought them already?
There would've been a good response, but we haven't, no. You know, obviously, the 30 inches are gonna be greater in cost. But it's more of an issue of product. When we go to plant, will those 30 inches be available? There's more 24 inches out there than there are 30 inches. Aside from that, these 24 inches are gonna grow to 30 inches within a short period of time. And we've got 155 of them out there. So we are making a substantial impact, maybe 145, of this bush, if you would, that we're suggesting, we want it to be a 24 inch.
Oh, I heard 55. You're telling me there's 155?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, check, it should have it on the plan. I think it's 100.
Did I hear you say 55 bushes or 155?
There are 155 deciduous shrubs that are proposed at 24 inches, which is approximately 44% of all of the deciduous shrubs that are proposed. I think it's on the bottom of the landscape page or off to the right side of the landscape page.
I lost my magnifying glass.
Sorry, I know there's a lot of text on there. There are other shrubs that are being proposed that are 30 inches and 36 inches. But 44% of all the shrubs, which equals to 155 shrubs, are proposed at 24 inches, so it's...
I just heard wrong. I apologize.
Anyone else have anything else on landscaping? Okay, then moving on to the number 10, which is the building design and architecture. Get into the façades and all that, but let's first talk about the dumpster. The seven to eight foot height of the dumpster enclosure?
That's acceptable, seven feet. Was seven feet acceptable? That's, I clearly understand. You know, eight feet's a pretty big wall to have in the middle of your parking lot. I don't want it to be any larger than we need it to be. But certainly, the six foot today with these larger dumpsters are not covering the top end of these. Seems like dumpsters are getting bigger and bigger.
Okay, so seven feet is okay?
Yeah.
I, you know, I think seven feet would work.
With, any objection to seven feet? Okay, and then, so now, we're on building design and architecture. One of the items that I had mentioned to Laura was the canopy. You know, the one, the canopy that you have is just a straight, flat canopy. If you would mirror what's on the old Ruby Tuesday building, that would really complement both of the buildings and give them a sense of belonging together.
Here's my issue about mirroring it. You know, I'm not sure if that was a custom fabricated piece, which I'm sure it was. Most your canopies, you don't see come in that. I've seen it like this, but, so it's a custom fab, that's a thicker canopy than we're gonna probably do. Why don't I suggest that, rather than have us this extensive canopy across both spaces, why don't we break it, add another, add another canopy brace? Because those are aesthetically not unappealing. You go, so we would break it in the middle and do the, so we're accenting each of the businesses, so as maybe not having this monotonous of canopy running across the whole front. If we can put a slight curvature in there, then we'll try to attempt to do that. A modest one, it's not gonna mirror up with what that piece is next door. That piece is a little over there.
No, but it's gonna look similar.
Pardon me?
It's gonna look similar. And what we're trying to do is continuity, so I think if that's possible for you to do, even if it's not as dramatic as the one on Ruby Tuesday's building or Buddy's building or whoever's building it is, I think that would be better. I do like the idea of breaking it up. I think that that piece going all the way across the entire front edge is... And the other thing that I would say about that, just in my opinion, is if you colorize it the same.
Colorize?
As the Ruby Tuesday building is.
That we intend on doing, to be a black. A black, I think Ruby's just like a bronze look and...
Yeah, whatever. I mean, you know, just, again, continuity, from my perspective. You know, if you could do just a little bit of a curve, break it up so it's not all the way across, do the same thing on your canopy that's over the drive-through, because don't you have a small canopy over the drive-through?
We do.
Yeah, and, you know, then colorize them in whatever way to make them look similar. Because I, quite honestly, I think the redesign that we're being shown is a big improvement over what we saw before. So I think, you know, from that standpoint, you've come a long way. I like the feature on the side and then on the base, and the windows are looking good. It gives you some breakup of that. And then if we went to the front of the building and did that, you know, you could identify the two things. You know, the problem I see with the design that you have there is, you know, you're gonna have two different, assuming we're gonna have two different occupants, right? The ties that hold that canopy are gonna be in the way of the sign.
They are. We may come back with a different fastener, rather than...
Yeah, that looks...
To fix it.
Because I'm sure they're gonna want that sign on the front of the building.
We're gonna get squeezed. Yeah, right. Especially if now we break that, that...
Well, it may be that, if, you know, if you create two, it's not so massive, you don't have the same stresses and all that other kinda good stuff.
Maybe it's a single.
Now, I'm talking like I know what I'm talking about, but I don't really. So I just, you know, it just seems to me that, you know, the more that you can, I think, Chairman Zabalski's point is, the more you can make it look similar, the better off we're gonna be.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting you duplicate it exactly, but it needs a little more architectural interest, so an arch. The only concern I have, I like the idea of breaking it off. The only, how deep is that canopy, do you know? Is it three feet, four feet? How far, what's the projection?
That's not gonna be, not gonna be more than two feet.
Oh, it's not gonna be more than two feet?
I don't think so.
Because I was concerned about...
Maybe three of the pod.
People come, you know, if you broke it up and you had a little bit of an arch, then water, snow's falling off, you know, in between, but I don't know if you did two arches and it's, it's gonna look kinda not so great. So maybe the breakup is the right approach, but having some kind of an arch, not necessarily as severe as what's on the current building, but a suggestion that, you know, they kinda go together.
I see they got a single strut that holds it up there. You know, keep in mind, that building is also almost 100 feet wide. My building is 30 feet wide. So the scale, I wanna keep in the scale of what we're doing here, that I'm not building, you're not seeing, the first thing that you see on the front of our building is the canopy. I want it to be an architectural element, not something that sticks out, so. And certainly, having it run across like we did, we just kinda followed suit with kinda the direction we were given, and we can certainly make those adjustments.
Well, you can work on that, and perhaps, Laura, the Administrator Review Committee can look at the final design of that, just to make sure it's, you know, the look that the mission wants.
Sure, and I think that just, these pictures are very helpful, because if you just look at the scale, this is the double door, and then there's two glass panes with this canopy. So knowing that size with the windows above, and then taking a look at what's proposed, you know, there's two double doors, plus the two panes on the side, twice over, plus an additional pane. While this is not a long building, it is sizable. And I think there are a number of manufacturers out there who make decorative canopies in a wide variety of styles, including curvature. So I think there's probably a nice compromise.
Okay, any comments on the design of the building? Do you have the building materials with you?
We do.
Yeah, sure.
Your corner point that you see would be all of this material. So this'll run down the northern side of the building. Northern set, side of the building, the southern side, and run, I'll call it the knee wall, of the entire perimeter of the building, on all four sides. And then we'll introduce the, the brick. The brick we'll see, it will, will be in all the brick areas you see outside of this area. With the exception in your soldier course, we'll probably turn this brick ninety degrees and run it across, probably do the half brick if you would, you know, to get that texture look. And then the top pieces will be a stone varnish beige that will match up with this.
And, and how thick is the, is the sill that goes across, you know, separates the knee wall from the brick part? Do you know how thick that?
I don't. It's gonna come out, Lauren showed a picture of a window. I think that was a good example. I see that is.
Yeah, two inches doesn't seem.
You know, it's interesting, that probably shouldn't come that far out, because remember, that's a window sill.
Right, right.
We're not gonna, it's not gonna be, you're not gonna expect that, that brick to come that far out at the side of the wall, so.
I'm looking mostly at the thickness of it. I think the four, that's probably four inches on the one on the left, which.
You're not looking at the depth, you're looking at.
Yeah, I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking at, you know, the four inch. Yeah, yeah. You can show it down at this end for these folks.
Will it be limestone, that material that separates the two? The knee wall?
Oh, no. It'll be a stone material. Solid stone material. It would probably match it, and it'll be a solid stone material on the top corners.
Oh, okay. And that brick color looks similar to, I think, the Ruby Tuesday.
We've heard in long so far, and this is about the closest hardy red that we can find.
Yeah.
We find something a little bit more hardier red, we're gonna take it. But this is definitely.
Yeah, it's very nice. Yeah, very nice. Okay, any, any more comments then on facade, building materials, anything else? Then.
The lighting.
Yes, the lighting, so the, the, the poles, black or bronze? I don't know myself, I favor the bronze, I think it's richer, but that's open up. And the reduction down to ten or eight feet. So what are, what are your thoughts on color and height?
Did I hear bronze or black, is that what?
Black or bronze?
Yep, black or dark bronze.
Okay, I thought I heard brown, but that's my hearing. My wife tells me I can't hear where they am anyway.
Oh, no. You, you're correct, the applicant had written brown on the site plan, which wasn't a color choice.
Okay, it is not a color choice. Okay. All right. So, yeah, I, my opinion is, is ten feet and bronze.
Any other thoughts? Okay, then it looks like that's a unanimous.
Ten feet, you mean fifteen?
No, ten feet.
And ten feet.
They're, they're recommending that they, the, the full, the pole heights be moved down to ten feet.
Yeah, if you look at the, she's got it up there now. If you look at that, which is a very attractive fixture.
Yeah.
If you had it up higher, it would look.
I know, but it says fifteen in our pack.
No, I know. No, but she recommended ten.
Ten or eight.
Eight or ten, in her presentation.
And it gives it a little more pedestrian-friendly look.
Feel.
And speaking of pedestrian. Yes. Yeah, I think it would look, look nice there. And any thoughts on the patio area, decorative concrete, stamped concrete, or pavers?
Why don't we look at doing potentially a, I wanna get away from pavers, just heave. Why don't we say an aggregate finish? There's this new brick aggregate that's got the stone in it. It's not, it's not a stamped concrete, but it's an aggregate finish. So it's a cement with a, a stone. It's very popular. And I think it wears well, we can do it with the same flat work guy. Then we're not, I, I'm trying to, I don't wanna, you know, if the tenants have a spec of what they like, I'm hoping that aggregate's as mainstream as we can get. But it'll be something different than the sidewalks.
Okay.
Oh, sure.
And that, that aggregate will, it'd be, well, I'm thinking if people are gonna sit there, if you're gonna have a table and a chair, it's not going to be unstable that people.
No, 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 when they wash it down, it, it's got a smooth finish to it.
Maybe that's something Laura, the Administrator Committee can look at.
Yeah, I think we would wanna make sure that it's ADA accessible.
Yeah.
Because this is the, the entrance for both establishments.
We're talking patio here?
The patio.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, something, and just not a concrete pad, something that.
Yeah, I understand.
Is a little more quality. All right, so are there any other items that the Commission wishes to discuss on this particular application? Hearing none, then is there a motion for a recommendation of approval to the Board of Trustees with whatever conditions you want to apply to that?
Yeah, I, that's my concern. I mean, there, there's clearly a trust problem, and there's been a lot of things promised tonight, and I'm not sure that, I'd rather see it all in writing before we move forward. I, I would, I would.
Well, it's up to you. I, I don't know if you have a feel of how the trustees would react to it.
I don't know.
Well, it's up to, it's open to discussion.
You're saying wait to, we look at the language, is that what you're proposing?
Have a final product before we spend it on the board of trustees.
Yeah, kinda, yeah. It's been so many changes tonight, and so many promises made. I don't even know if we captured them all.
Well, you know. The other thing is, when we look at the site, so what's your ETA? If, if we said you were approved today, what would the ETA be? I mean, we look at the, the Maxon Irma site, I mean, I, I'm, that's still sitting there, kind of neglected. Unless I've missed something, it doesn't seem like that's gone anywhere.
No, it's, it's, just move along. We're coming back in with a site plan here in the next week. We've landed our last tenant there. And that slowed us up by six to nine months. We had a long, lengthy process with Wayne County on that. For the approvals, we actually have Wayne County permit on that, including soil erosion, as a comment to your statement, Mr. Herbert. You know, the, the timing on this thing, Buddy's is under construction now. So, that's our timeline now. And we've gotta meet expanding that parking lot, or, or, or we have a default provision in there. We want them part of our community. We want them part of this development. So that's what's driving this. You know, we've gone on record, you have the minutes, we're going to. The, the agreement regarding the fifty thousand dollars is already in the PUD agreement. We're not making a promise if it hasn't been put in the agreement. The additional forty-four trees, we can make that part of the PUD agreement, that's fine. So that takes care of that. These architectural elements, I mean, we can, you, you, you have oversight with the administration to make sure we bring a canopy back that matches what we're talking about here. I don't think we made any other changes on the elevation. No, I, not material, that was, that was the biggest one.
I think the biggest one, going back to the tree situation, you know, along the west property line, you know, what I counted were seventy-two trees, and it's sort of unclear, is that enough? And I, you know, without having kind of a revised site plan, as, as Laura has suggested, you know, center to center, some kind of documentation that, you know, we're not crowning the trees. You know, we don't wanna put too many trees, and then in ten years or whatever, half of them are dying out because they can't get enough sunlight or, or air. So we, you know, we've gotta have something a little bit more documented as to what is an appropriate number of trees back there.
But we're putting up the fifty thousand. We have to do those, we have to use best practices. And if we don't use best practices, when you inspect them on or before October thirty-first, which is our deadline, and when we have to have them in there, then we're, we're at risk. You know, you have the, you have the deposit there. It's, it's counterintuitive, counterproductive for us to, to do these in such a manner that they're gonna die. We gotta keep them living. We're gonna irrigate them like we said. We can add the forty-four trees into the PUD, that's easy to do that. So, you know, it'd be like, there's other elements that, you know, you expect that we're gonna follow through on. And you have your, your building department, which have oversight on these items, to make sure that footings are put in the way they should be, make sure that sidewalks are done, prepped the way they should be, so on and so forth. I think this is just another item that will be oversaw, like, like it would anyways, with or, without us going on record that we're gonna do it correctly. We're obligated to do it correctly. And if it comes back and it's less trees, we know that we gotta plant. We'll have a provision in the PUD that we know we gotta plant, that minute, we gotta plant all the trees back on site. So to your point, Mr. Zabalski, if, if it finds out we only can put sixty-five there, then we'll put the other remaining thirteen. In this case, would be the, the remaining seven, if you would, assuming we have seventy-two, because I haven't counted them either, on this site. We've got more than enough land to put the, the plantings. We just kinda relegated them in certain areas.
I have a concern that the plans that go to the Board of Trustees won't be complete. That they'll still be open items, or this didn't make it on the plan, or this wasn't clear on the plan. And I would like to have, I guess, a good, clean set of plans to go to the Board of Trustees. That's our job. What do you think, Bob?
I agree.
So, what's the difference between doing it now or doing it if it's possible at the next Planning Commission meeting?
In terms of their timeline?
Yeah.
I believe the applicant, even though the study session was canceled, would like to go before the Board at the April ninth meeting, which would be before the April seventeenth PC meeting.
When is the next Board of Trustees meeting after that?
So, yeah, it would be April ninth.
But after that, when's the next one?
Oh, after that?
Two weeks later?
Yeah, it, it should be. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but it should be two weeks.
It would be the twenty-third. The issue with.
Is that Easter week?
Easter, yeah, Easter's the twenty-first.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we're gonna have one that week.
Well, Board, the other thing is that Board packets go out, it must be to the clerk's office by noon on the Wednesday before. So, anything that would happen on our regular scheduled Planning Commission can't make it to the next Board agenda by default.
Okay.
The new plans that come in are not gonna be that much different than what we have here, other than the spacing requirement that's been requested by, for our landscape architect to do. Other than that, we're not gonna, you know, I'm gonna make a break in the canopy. Light poles are, I'm gonna spec them out as eight to ten feet, or in this case, ten feet.
Yeah, you're, you're right. You know, they're fairly minor, they're not gonna, the big thing in my mind is those trees. I'm not, you know, I'm concerned, is seventy-two enough? Is it too much, you know, is it not enough?
We'll have the PUD, which will amend between now and the Board meeting.
Oh, okay.
Big thing in my mind is the lack of trust between.
I know.
Nothing against you, Leo.
Yeah.
Against you. I mean, we got a serious trust problem. So, okay, so what if they don't do these things? What remedies do we have? Okay, we got fifty thousand dollars on deposit if they don't plant the trees. At a thousand bucks a tree, to Bill's point. But what else, what other remedies do we have, Laura? What if they don't do, what if they don't, what if they're not good to their word? Because they haven't been good to their word in the past.
Well, as part of the Buildings Department's process in permitting, they will have a temporary CVO, and then before they reach their final CVO, everything on the site will have to be certified. And they will have to bond for the engineering improvements and the other landscaping that they're proposing. So, I think they propose like a hundred and forty, or sixty-two thousand dollars?
We're putting fifty thousand up as, and that, that bond falls across to the site work as well.
So that's fifty thousand for the trees, or fifty thousand for the whole project?
The, the PUD was negotiated, it was fifty thousand dollars for the trees and the site work. So if there's any problems with the site work, you also have that fifty thousand dollars bond too. That you can.
Yeah, that's not.
Now, keep in mind, our site work issue. Yeah, but our site work issue on this thing is just an expansion of a parking lot. It's not, doesn't include, where we, and, and, and of course, we're doing a, a water line as well.
That's not my understanding of how that works.
Well, this Phase One involves actually the utilities for Phase Two. There will, the way it's shown in the engineering plans, they're going to be constructing the storm sewer, and, which is quite substantial in quantity. And then same thing with the sanitary sewer, to be servicing the future hotel. And then, of course, the water main. And then the storm sewer for Phase One, there's quite a few, well, actually substantial length or quantity of storm sewer for Phase One. So there's substantial quantities for all the utilities involved. For Phase One.
So where do you stand with the engineering drawings?
They're done. Well, they're done from an, a, you know, based upon what your engineer said tonight. They've been completed. I'm sure there's some final items that will come up in the pre-construction meeting.
Yeah, for the construction plans, I'm still owed by the engineer those first three sheets for each plan set.
Right. No, we, we're.
What's the list of all? So what is the list of all the things that have been changed or added to it?
Well, here, here's my list, that, that, first of all, it would be subject to the, the, the two parcels being joined as one. That is one. That the tree fund, I don't know, are you gonna change, you're gonna recommend something greater than three fifty a tree?
Definitely.
Okay, so you gotta figure out what, what's, what's that recommendation going to be?
I don't know, what do you think?
I think you said a thousand a tree.
Yeah, that's, that's where I would go. And then.
And then the, 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 a boulevard entrance would be constructed at the time of.
Phase Two.
Phase Two. That there would be the, the Phase Two property, lack for a better word, you know, the rear part of this property, the soil would have to be stabilized.
Right. And hydroceded?
Hydroceded, right. Stabilized by hydroceding.
Yeah, by hydroceding.
That.
Irrigated?
And irrigated?
Yeah, that would, well, we're not gonna irrigate back in there yet, because they gotta dig it all up for the infrastructure. But it would be that the, that there would be the lawn all the way across.
And the hydroceding.
Beck Road.
Right.
Everything is gonna be irrigated, confirmation of that. That there's gonna be a seven-foot dumpster enclosure. We decided, I think, on the twenty-four inch deciduous shrubs?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's what, as far as I'm concerned.
The light poles were gonna be bronze and at ten feet. So that's what I have in my notes, as to what would have to be included in the enclosure.
Well, then.
As far as the trees on the way back, though?
Well, that's the other one.
How are they gonna stay alive?
Well, if they die, he's gonna have to replace them.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't irrigate that.
How are you gonna enforce that?
When they come back, well, whenever they come back for Phase Two. Now, if they never come back from Phase Two, and those trees could potentially all die. That's a risk.
And so could the hydroceding. And you got a lot covered with weeds.
No, but hey, look at. You know.
And that parcel's been vacant for how long? Since Ruby Tuesday's one in there?
Yeah, but he's, that parcel isn't, he's gonna have to combine, he has to combine it. So now we got one parcel, and he's on the hook for everything. So, you know. Yeah, but the, and, and the, the thing that, the thing about those trees is, if, if he plants them and they die, he has to replace them. That's the requi- That's the requirement.
We own them.
Yeah, he has to replace them.
And there has to be some type of documentation as to, uh, on, on the number of trees and, and the distance between those trees. We don't have enough information, but, you know, that would be subject to whatever the Board of Trustees would want to do and say, well, we need some kind of documentation, is 72 trees enough? How far apart should they be?
Can the Administrative Committee do that so that it's...
I don't know what we would do there.
...be coordinated to the Board of Trustees?
I don't think we can do that. I, I don't, wouldn't feel comfortable about that. You know, once, once the Board of Trustees approve it, then, then I guess we could. But what, what do you think, Laura? Would you be comfortable doing that with, before it goes to the trustees? I don't know.
Well, I would like to see the architects' landscape archi, the applicant's landscape architect's response to the tree spacing in some sort of written fashion. And then I would also like to have an independent evaluation from a landscape architect, take a look and see what he thinks about the revised plantings at that height.
But whether or not that could be done in time for the April 9th meeting for the trustees?
I mean, I, I surely hope that Phase 2 goes through, but we have to kind of assume that it won't. So then what? You know, what, what does that parcel look like? Dead trees and dead grass?
No, but we have payment in lieu, you know?
Why don't you have the oversight for the landscaping be implemented while the trees are being planted? I mean, you're ultimately going to have to go out there and confirm how many trees we plant as part of our agreement through your Building Department. So had Laura's suggestion of having a landscape architect take a look at, you know, we'll, I'll do the narrative. I'll have our architect do a narrative of what the best practices of these plantings are, specifically for the trees in the back. I don't think you're suggesting the bushes and so forth. We'll do that. And then you just have a oversight that, of, when, when we install those, that they're inspected as such.
And there would be an independent evaluation of whatever their landscape architect is proposing.
Correct. And I can, once we have those documents and that review conducted, I can forward those to the commission.
So that has to be done before it goes before the trustees?
How did you get the picture?
Or, or, you know, I don't know what the trustees, you know, you know, we're making that, I guess we're suggesting that to the trustees.
I think it's being suggested to the trustees. It does seem like the trustees, of course, want everything buttoned up before they get it. Otherwise, it would probably be their, their resolution for approval of the PUD would be contingent on that outstanding item, which they don't usually do unless it's something like an easement that they know is coming back from the state or something like that.
Yeah, because eventually it's going to go, we would make, recommend to the trustees that their landscape architects submit something and then it's independently. Because of the time crunch, there isn't enough time to pull that together.
Yeah, we have about three business days.
That's the problem is, you know, while I definitely am empathetic to the, to the situation, I, I hate to feel pushed into a corner. I just hate to feel that way.
Because every developer has a timeline.
Huh?
Every developer has a timeline.
Yeah, I know.
Remember, we're, we're not planting those trees until September. So, I mean, we have this...
Does Ned realize that he's put, he's put us in that position?
Well, we could do it sooner. We'll do the bushes and everything, but we're not going to do the trees in that furthest west. Everything else will probably get landscaped, because bushes will take place.
Well, it's not, it's not only the trees that put us in this position. It's that every time, this is our, what, ninth iteration?
Yeah.
I mean, come on. And it's never been fully baked.
And we did push back in December because there seemed to be a big push to hurry up and get that done, and then it doesn't come back until March. And then there's the Maxximera. We accommodated them at that time, and it's still just sitting there.
And then we have a special meeting today, and we get revised diagrams today. Come on, it's, it's, you know, it's disrespectful.
Laura, for, for motion to pass, do we need four votes or five votes?
Because we're missing one person.
Yeah, Postel's not here, so we would need a majority. So we would need, we would need four.
Well, as I think about it, I'm a little bit nervous sending it to the trustees without having a complete thing. I mean, I don't want to...
And then if it goes to the trustees and they approve it, and then there's still outstanding items, then we've all signed off on it.
And we've been going at this thing long enough that I just, I just think this is one, one application that we do, we do not want to rush on. So my, my assessment is, you know, if we can get them back here at the April meeting, can we get, you think we can get them back? Can you get it done by the April meeting? And we can have a full set of plans that gives us everything that we talked about tonight and, and tell him that's, that's on him, that's not on us.
And Commissioner Pratt, we've also given, if I'm not mistaken, them the benefit, we've given you the benefit of doubt like three or four times.
Well, I don't disagree with that. That's the reason I'm...
And that's why this now, we...
I'm sitting back...
He's tested our patience.
And quite honestly, I just went through in my mind what I was going to say at this motion, and I'm going, I'm not doing this again, yeah. I'm not doing that again.
We were here just over a week ago, and we had said we want all the i's dotted, all the t's crossed. We wanted a clean set of plans that we could just approve.
And read through and...
We've been here 90 minutes.
And present properly to the Board of Trustees. And I think that's, that's our, that's our role, that's our mission. And I, I don't think we can do that. And so I'm sitting back trying to, we're trying to jerry-rig this thing and rub, rub Goldberg it, and it's, boy, I am old, aren't I? And it's just not going to work. So I have a motion, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone application 2274-0118 until the applicant provides all the proper information.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to postpone a recommendation of, to the Board of Trustees for said applicant. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So when's the next meeting?
April...
17th.
Now, how do we view the November meeting approval? How is that, are you going to blend that into this? Because you approved the plans in November. You, you approved the plans in November.
Yeah, we approved...
Approved the plans.
In November.
Subject to, of course, the, the architectural. That's why we came back to you on the study session in November.
Yeah.
Remember?
I do.
So that's why we came back, went to study session. And, of course, we've made these changes. I think all the improvements we've made or suggested today were improvements, not, not things that we did out of school. We offered 15-foot poles, and you guys want eight or 10? I think that's a good suggestion.
Leo, I think personally, from my own viewpoint, I, I think we made progress on all these other items. I think the biggest stumbling block are those trees. Everything else, I, I think, is good. I mean, I, I think you have come along. I really like the, the elevations of it. It, it's the trees that personally I have a problem with, and I think most of the commissioners have a problem with those trees along the back line.
And, you know, the plan isn't complete. I don't know if you could get it done in three days based on past experience. And I hate to, I feel nervous about sending that, something to the trustees that is sort of jerry-rigged around. I don't know.
We've done, we have a special meeting. We talked about this last week. We reviewed plans that have been pulled off of agendas repeatedly. I think that this commission has went over backwards to try to make this work. But it is our job to send clean plans to the Board of Trustees so that they can make a decision and do their job. We can't pass it off to the Board of Trustees to decide. I think we've given this application much more than, perhaps more than we should have, where we have been more lenient or given more time to it than we probably should have in that we've ever had to do with another applicant. So let us just do our job.
Can we go to the board and have them vet this out and see if they have any comments on this?
I don't, I don't know, Laura. Do you, can, can he go directly to the board? I don't know how the ordinance or the law is written on that.
And the comeback clause?
And then he's going to come back. We would just take, take it away from us to them.
Yeah.
I don't know. I guess maybe that's a board decision.
Yeah, I wouldn't see that being...
We want to pass this.
So your next meeting is when?
We really do.
Your next meeting is the 23rd of...
17th.
17th. And the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, the board meeting is on the...
23rd, the following Tuesday.
And that's ten, that's kind of tentative because that is Easter week. And I think Commissioner Dorshavitz even mentioned that.
Yeah.
That may not even be a meeting that week.
21st is Easter.
Yeah, I, I think, we do have a meeting scheduled. We definitely have a meeting scheduled because it, it's different this year because usually spring break, the schools is Easter week, but it's not this year. So... Yeah, so we'll probably still meet. But if the due date is Wednesday...
It's done.
You know, come, come with a fully baked. I mean, even if you guys got to pull an all-nighter.
Hold on, due date is Wednesday for the 23rd meeting? No.
No, no.
You're talking... For the 17th, is this Wednesday, coming up Wednesday?
April 17th is the regular Planning Commission meeting.
So if the Board of Trustees' meeting is the next Tuesday, I'm sure we can get, we can get a special exemption. I'll lobby for that personally.
For 12 hours?
Yeah.
It's 12 hours.
So when's my deadline for the Planning Commission meeting?
It was two weeks ago.
Yeah, that's my point.
Yeah, the, the schedule for public hearing notices is advertised that way.
Oh, yes, that's true.
Oh, they have to, the Board of Trustees are going to have a public hearing for this?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. The, the deadline for the Planning Commission meetings is technically 30 days beforehand so that we can get the public hearing notices in advance to the clerk's office and then the paper deadline. So technically, we have passed our advertised deadline for the Planning Commission meeting. We would be accepting this application late, which does add stress to the Planning Department, which we are willing to do. But it should also be known that this is like the 10th time that this has happened with this applicant. Not just for this project. That there's been a flexibility.
So this could be the last time.
It better be the last time.
Get it right.
I hope it is, too. So we can, we can submit it here in the next week or so, and we'll, we'll deal with the...
I think we're all anxious to try to get this off our docket.
But right.
Yes.
Understood.
Yeah.
Nothing personal, Leo. We're trying, we're not trying to be unreasonable. I think that, you know, at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. We want a quality project. We want to know what we're signing off on, and I don't think that's unreasonable.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, as I said, the last time you were here, you know, we understand what you've all had to go through, and there's, you know, different layers here. So it's no reflection on you. It's, it's basically to the, to the owner of this.
None taken, I understand. But here's what I do need a clarification. I want a consensus of what you guys want on this landscape plan so I know in totality of what we need to put around the plan. Because I don't want to submit it and it not be what you want. So tell me what you want on it, and I'll itemize it. We'll take the notes, and I'll make sure that my landscape architect brings that back. We talked about 44 trees. Can we put the 44 trees back on this property? And if we can't plant the 72 where we show it, can we plant the remaining balance within the property? Do we have an agreement on that? And we'll write that into the PUD agreement, so that's a surviving document. Is there anything else that I missed or additions?
Commissioners, I'm not, I'm not sure if I understand that correctly. Is the request then for no payment in lieu for those 44 trees? Those 44 trees would in effect be...
So the, the discussion was if they're, if it's impractical to put the 44 trees, then, then it needs to be a more substantial...
Payment in lieu.
Payment in lieu.
Okay.
I said 3,000, he said 1,000.
That's because I'm Mr. Nice Guy.
And it, and with, with...
That's because 1,000 is not an incentive.
With the payment in lieu, I mean, you know, again, we're, the payment in lieu is going elsewhere, most probably not to this site. And this is what troubles me is that there was a previous Board of Trustees' meeting where the supervisor, Supervisor Heisey, I think he pointedly asked you, or he made reference to the, to the church property on Ridge Road, and he said, well, it's going to stay, the payment in lieu will stay on the site, right, Laura? And there was no response. And so, you know, I, is it that he doesn't know that the payments don't stay on the property? The payments don't stay on the property, correct? I mean, we can use them on the property if the Board of Trustees so, so elects. But at the end of the day, the trees are gone, and it's, the payment in lieu is going with them somewhere.
Correct. The payment in lieu is going elsewhere. Not to the property, but elsewhere in the township. The payment in lieu is to recognize that if we were actually to replant all the trees that were taken out as part of this project, it would cover a similar size and area, and then you couldn't actually ever build the hotel.
You would, you would have this, you, in the, in totality in the township, you'd have the same number of trees. You might just plant them somewhere else.
It's just offset, yeah, similarly like a transfer of development rights to one zone to another. So...
I understand, I understand.
The hope for, with what they are replacing onsite is that eventually, as those trees mature, and if they're starting from a good height of 10 feet, that, you know, it will, it will create kind of a forested area. But I think this site is very heavily landscaped. I mean, if, if we compare this plan to other plans that we've looked at for developments, this does exceed the zoning ordinance standards for just general landscaping. And I think the landscape plan that they have provided will be quite nice in terms of the parking lot and along Beck and along the other, the north and south property lines. I'm afraid that if additional trees are added to the site, then they would only be removed later as Phase 2 is developed, just...
Because they got to put a parking lot behind that, behind that, that hotel that they're going to build in front of Phase 2.
Yes, and if that happens 10 years from now and we're not here, even if someone goes back to the minutes, maybe they have a different approach on it. I mean, it can be very hard to ensure that continuity over the years. So if the alternative to that is that, you know, 44 trees could be planted in a township park that we know is going to remain as parkland in perpetuity, and that they will really have a chance to mature and be enjoyed for the next 50 years, then that is a, is the silver lining to development of sites which occurs no matter what.
At first I...
But the, but the, my, my only point, my only point to that is, and I don't disagree. All I'm saying to you is that $15,000 isn't enough for what's happened here. And he needs to understand that that's the case. And so, you know, whatever you do with those 44 trees, maybe we don't want them back on the site because what we know is that they're going to come out. Somewhere, somehow, old Ned is going to pay for it. And that is going to happen if the Planning Commission, or at least I, have anything to say about it. So just put them on notice, that's the deal.
Well, but let me understand what we agreed to. Well, but let me understand what we agreed to. We can put the forty-four trees back on the site. I understand the, what ifs in the future, but we don't even know what the scale of the second Phase Two project might be. And at a minimum, if it doesn't take five or ten years to do it and we have to move these trees around and we're still obligated to replace them onsite, it's far better to have them on the site than to have them somewhere else. And, and with the unknown, it gives us the flexibility of putting them on this, on this plan. We didn't, but we would like to do that and have the preference, the discretion to do that. We understand the consequences if we don't to pay a thousand, well, your suggestion of a thousand.
Yeah, that's right.
So Laura, I, I'm a little confused now. So on the, on the western side.
Yes.
Are you suggesting, I, I, or not suggesting, but are you concerned that if we plant the trees there now, that there's a, that we should be concerned that they may have to be removed once that phase is underway?
No, not as presented on this plan. While they may be too tight, the location of them on that western and northern property line, should, they should be able to install protective screening and they shouldn't be impacted by the future development. But if additional trees, if that area expands, let's say, you know, on the middle of the site or even along this western boundary, if it moves another twenty feet east, that is technically in the area of their banked parking that they have proposed and along the, the back of their curb. So those trees may not fare as well if, if additional plantings are provided on site. And even though we don't know if something will happen in the next five or ten years, the chance that those could be removed at a later date, it doesn't, it doesn't seem a proper trade-off when those trees could be planted elsewhere in the township and known with certainty that they would survive and grow into maturity.
I would agree with that approach. I mean, at first, when this tree, you know, tree fund was sort of a new concept, which we hadn't done before. But once Laura told me that there's, it's a dedicated fund, it just doesn't go into the general fund.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
You know, so I, I'm thinking, okay, so, yeah, these trees are lost. This, this proposal has got a lot of shrubs in it. And it would be better then to plant those trees. And so who's going to enjoy it? Just the customers and who occupies? It would be better to plant them in, in the park or somewhere else in a public area of the township so that the residents can enjoy that and not just the selected people that are going to be frequently, frequently, this, you know, buddies or whatever else that's going in there.
Yeah.
My, my only concern would be then, Laura, is that is there sufficient information now that you could have an independent landscaper look at it and advise us as to.
The density.
The density and, and the long-term health of those trees, you know, where, you know, the spacing and all that and the type of tree and that kind of thing.
Yes, a landscape architect could take the plans and, and they are to scale, even though they're small. But they could determine the on-center, even though it's not noted, and the type of species and if there's what type of irrigation and determine.
So you have enough information now that, that they've submitted that you can take that to, to another landscaper?
Yes, I'd like to have written communication from Brian Devlin, who is the landscape architect on this project, on his take. And if, if there needs to be some changes, then I would like him to make those prior to us spending the time reviewing it with the landscape architect. But I think both need to happen.
Yeah, if he can look at, at that screen. To me, I, I think that's where all of us are concerned about. The additional forty-two trees or whatever it is, personally, I think it's better going into the tree fund.
As long as it is screened though.
Yeah, so, yeah, the first priority.
That's the key component is screening the property from the industrial behind.
Maybe he needs forty-two more trees, who knows?
Because otherwise, we could do that with every property.
Right.
Say, just put the trees in the park.
Yeah. And maybe there's seventy-two is too much. I mean, we don't know.
There's lots of disease with these type of trees, evergreen trees. I hope when you speak to or communicate with that landscape architect, we talk about the, the most sturdy of the species.
Well, we'll do.
Yeah, because I had some landscaping done at my house years ago and they told me there's some kind of fungus or whatever that's attacking.
Most Austrian pines.
Yeah, Austrian pines, blue spruce.
Yep.
White pine.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the disease resistance of those trees and can they survive with minimal irrigation, you know, just.
Yeah, Austrian pines are out there.
I think we should leave this topic and branch out in a new direction.
Yeah.
Well, I want to get it right.
What do you want to do, Chris Pop?
I want to, I want to get your consensus right because we want to be back here at the planning commission meeting. I want to make sure that we, whatever we do is right in sync with what you want on this, on this landscape. So what, what is the direction that we should proceed on the landscape plans? On the additional forty-four trees?
Well, let's see if, let's see if you're not going to need more than the seventy-two trees.
Well, I can talk to my landscape architect, but there's a fundamental difference between what my landscape architect, you know, he's going to tell me whether I should plant them in a park or not. So what I'm suggesting is if, if we cannot plant them on site, then, which is a possibility, let's plant, let's look at that option. If we can't plant them on site, then what is the expectations of the planning commission?
You're going to pay for them. You're going to pay for taking out the other trees.
That's fine.
Okay. It's just that simple. Now, what you're going to pay, that's a different thing. We'll have to have more cogitation on that. You know what that means, thinking about it.
It doesn't, off the top of my head, it doesn't seem right that three fifty is just for the cost of the tree. Somebody's got to plant that tree.
I don't think we need to go into that now.
That's a number.
I think, I think, I think we're beyond that. You have your marching orders as far as I'm concerned. You know what you need to do. And, and, and if you want to get this done as quickly as you possibly can, you need to make sure that our planner is satisfied about putting this application on our April seventeenth meeting. That's your job.
I, I think it's all about the landscaping. Everything else we talked about today, I, I think we're all.
Yeah, but I don't want to see those. I understand that, but, you know, I think, I think he can, he can do, he can do drawings and see it in the plan and, and, you know, the, the, the changes that are required, I think, are relatively minimal with the exception of the landscape. And the landscape, you know, I don't, I don't know. We'll see what our, you, we'll see what your landscape engineer has to say. We'll see what our independent landscaper has to say about these trees. But my personal opinion is that putting them in the, in the, on the property for the sake of putting them on the property without putting them on the property properly, if you can, if I can say that.
For the right reason.
For the right reason, doesn't, doesn't help, help anything. And what we know for sure is if seventy-two is the right number, you're forty-four short and you're going to pay for that.
So, and then my commitment, my, my argument to the board of trustees would be that the, the, the cost, the in-loop payment has to be sufficient to serve as a deterrent to others. Three hundred and fifty dollars a tree is not a deterrent.
There you go.
Laura, do other communities have a tree fund?
Oh, yes, it's very common for communities to have a tree fund. What I also have noticed is that some communities have civil infractions for removal of trees prior to approval. And that is something that our township does not have.
Do, can you find out what, what is their cost per tree? How do they handle that? So we, you know, we just can't pick a number out of the air. I think we have to be rationalization as to how we arrived at that number.
I, I will check that out.
You know, something that we would recommend to the board of trustees.
Do you, do you know what the civil infraction is in other communities? Do you have any idea?
No.
No?
Probably five hundred dollars.
I remember Canton, someone put trees in Canton.
Yeah.
It's, it's probably five hundred dollars. Most of the civil infractions are five hundred dollars.
Just a flat five.
Up to five hundred dollar fund.
Per tree?
Per tree, times forty-four, it's twenty-two thousand dollars.
I, I think we're speculating when we don't really know, so I think we got to move on.
But it would be good to, to find out.
I will.
What other communities do.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I, I have a. Maybe Leo, you come back and say, here's what we propose and bring that with you, you know? That would go a long way.
I have an unrelated question. Are you at a point where you're disclosing tenants for the old Maxxanurmas yet?
Sure. We landed Panera Bread for the corner. Really? What do you think about that for the community? We passed on Starbucks. They kind of gave us the long road and Panera come along at the right time. Taco Bell, corporate deal, freestanding. One of only eight in the country, being done next year. A, a urgent care, real, real new urgent care coming out of a group of fifty-five doctors that have multiple emergency rooms around the state. They want to do an urgent care offering. And we're messing around with the national phone, pharmacy and a dentist.
Pharmacy and what?
Dentist. That's kind of the lineup.
All right.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Barbarina and supported by Commissioner Dorshavitz to adjourn the meeting at nine oh four. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.